Good evening, everybody. We will call this meeting of the Milton School Committee to order. Sorry, my computer just went to sleep. Okay. So, good evening. October 23rd, 2024. Meeting of the Milton School Committee. And our first, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So first, we will approve our agenda for tonight. And the only change that I'm aware of is postponing the approval of minutes to our next meeting. Does anyone else have any changes to our agenda? Okay, in that case, we can move on to our first item, which is public comment. And this is the portion of our meeting where we welcome members of the community to come and share a perspective with us. I don't believe we have anyone in person for public comment this evening. If you are online and would like to join public comment, can you please raise your hand at this time? All right, I don't see any hands raised online. So we will move along into the superintendent's report. And Dr. Burrows, you're joining us from online. We are really excited to have the team from Cunningham here this evening for their Site Council presentation. Is there anything you wanted to say first?
Sure, yeah, a couple of things I wanted to share before Cunningham takes it away. First of all, just wanted to provide an update on action teams. Our action teams, which are part of the implementation plan, that kind of big work that we're in, systems work that we're moving forward, have started meeting, started last week. The group that I'm a part of is meeting next week. So we're kind of in full swing. And I also would say it's been a really busy month. And a lot going on in schools. You all know from many of you having kids in schools, know just kind of how many events are happening and other things. And so it's been a very fast month, but a very exciting month as we start to dig into this work. And wanted to just kind of do a quick shout out to our full FPS leadership team, who are all juggling many, many needs and kind of inspiring along the way. So. Budget development is in full swing. We'll be hearing a little bit, you know, every, every meeting, we're kind of talking about the different stages of that work. I'm excited about the structure that we have landed on this year. We are working with our principals, our directors, and our full leadership team. And we're also working with our student representatives, which has been really exciting. And that, that work is getting off the ground. So I think as we talked about, the more our budget can be, you know, transparent, engaging, and the community really kind of understands and is a part of the process of building this budget, which, as you all know, is a pretty long process. Where we start in September and go all the way to May. So that work is, is continuing. And I think we're, we're making some really strong strides that will continue to build on in years to come. So that's really exciting. The Monster Dash, just the Monster Dash, the MFE event, which is a member of Sam Chikalo is this Sunday at 10 o'clock at Cunningham Park. And that is really, really fun. And those are my, those are my short updates for tonight. And I'm ready to hand it off to Cunningham and ask their questions.
Thank you so much. Anyone have questions for Peter? All right. Well, in that case, we're excited to have our first school Site Council presentation of this year. And welcome Cunningham team.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Very excited. I'm glad we're all here. I know one of us I need to speak to about being first again this year. We're very excited and do our presentation today. But if I could have two minutes before we get started, I just want to talk about something that happened today with professional development and talk about how impactful it was to the point where I brought the slides that the teachers put together around the work that they're going to do use Performance Matters for. And how when we task teachers for doing more and don't provide that level of support, I think this is a great example of us just doing that. Like us providing the support that they need to use the data in the way that we're asking them to, to make their intervention groups, to work collaboratively with each other. So Andy put together a great schedule for the year. I talked a little bit about it last year. But this year, they're not actually taking their lunch for the planning time. But now they have work that they can continuously do with each other. And they saw it for the first time today. So I just want to commend Regina and all the work that went into the plan for today's session. And again, I brought the slides back up. You can see their comments. And that's coming directly from them. So just want to throw that out there. So again, welcome to the Cunningham Site Council presentation. It's going to be on one of these screens. That's a great question.
Oh, sorry, Mark, I'm sorry.
I keep going about today.
Well, I'll add, it was definitely a group effort in terms of planning with the whole team, including John. You're on it. I appreciate your input from the building level perspective.
Yeah, so we could do our introductions. We have a great Cunningham team. As you see, we have Becky Davis here with us and Andy Young with us as well, our Assistant Principal and Parent Rep. Who are going to be representing the Site Council members for today's presentation. A lot of the slides you, the structure of it, sorry, not slides, the structure of the slides you'll be familiar with. We took, we made a lot of efforts to adopt the language from the implementation plan into our goals. But we did leave our goals as a reference because technically this will be our final year of the plan that we've spoken about. So we are adapting, adopting language into our goals. And we're going to talk about what that looks like today as well. There you go. So. So I'm a typical, yep. So we're going to go over our introductions, which you just did. And we're going to talk about our implementation goals and how that looks at the Cunningham School. We're going to talk about the data and as well. And I put the slides there, giving how much time we have left. I'll get in as deep as you want to go. I know that was a topic last time, School Committee, that I wanted to talk about the context and what it looks like and how we're addressing it at the Cunningham School with the MCAS and the internal assessments. And then following today's PD, I think it can really tie a lot of things together. So this is the next, next one, the who are we slide, please? One more, yeah, perfect. So this slide, I wanted to take some time to just talk with 631 students. We're pre-K the five school, as you know. I put the IEP numbers and the 504 numbers this year. So you can see them by grade level. One thing I wanted to highlight is the IEP numbers being consistent after preschool as far as like, and I'm saying sort of total number of students on the educational plan, you can see the 504s increase as the students are coming off. We are providing, we're continuing to provide accommodations. So the work of the 504 Coordinator with his team chairs at the school, you can see how that's reflected in, so the numbers as well. And then for the EL students, I just want to mention that there's a .8 teacher covering all those needs. And that will be reflected sort of with, so for one .8 teacher doing all the needs for the EL services. We have one reading teacher doing kindergarten, preschool and kindergarten. We have one reading teacher doing first grade and second grade. And we have one reading teacher doing third, fourth and fifth grade. So just thinking structurally of what that looks like as the numbers increase, because our total numbers increase. You can see we're able to offer more supports. If you remember the chart from last year, some of those were zeros because we didn't offer supports in those grade levels. So we're very appreciative and know the impact that it has. And it does make a difference. But we just wanted to sort of make sure that sort of we're being sort of clear and transparent about where those supports are taking place. For FLA, we have our first and second grade reading teacher supporting the FLA. And for math, we have one math teacher working with 32 students. So that was the same as last year, but there were 25 students who qualified last year at this time. So right now, we have 32 students that qualified. And that will talk about sort of the structure. So when you have students in multiple classes receiving supports, it does create a hardship as far as how much time you can do the supports in the classroom. Because we want to make sure that they're getting the minutes that we're saying that they need to provide their intervention. So that makes like tier two level supports kind of come pullout supports, which is not ideal, which is not what we want. And then I think Andy's going to talk about where some of those supports take place, which is also not ideal, not what we want. But it's sort of like, you know, like what we feel, what can we do with our students, with the resources that we have space wise. Go one more, please. All right. And then this, so you're familiar with our personalized learning goals, our equity in learning and our safety supporters schools and the work that we do in each of those areas. We are continuing that work, but we want to adopt the implementation plan language. We did meet with the Site Council. We did sort of talk about this and brought on this change. But you'll see a lot of similarities to the things we presented in the past. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Young, who is going to get into our school improvement goals.
Thank you, Dr. Redden. Hello, everyone. So when we think about this, well, when I think about the school improvement goals and I haven't talked to Dr. Redden about this analogy, but I think about the, the mind, the body and the soul. So each of these three areas, if we just go to that next slide, please. As Dr. Redden said, mentioned, we tried to align what was the strategic plan into now this improvement. So thinking about those three pillars, strategic priorities within our implementation plan. Think about the mind as our focus on academic excellence. The body being the operations facilities and the finance and budget within our, our school district. And then finally, the soul of the school really being the climate, the culture and the overall wellbeing of staff, students and families as well. So if we go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about that first priority area, which is really focusing on the mind. So thinking about the students' academic excellence, we're thinking about, and it's really rooted in the foundation that all students can be successful, given the right resources within our school to really think about them as individuals, thinking about the ways that they can be uniquely successful. But that's kind of the foundational piece that we, that we believe in, that all students can be successful. And it's our job to really provide those supports for students. When we think about that, it's, it's the supports that we're providing are very specific instructional best practices. It's thinking about providing interventions at just in time moments. It's providing specialized services for students. And then it's also offering enrichment opportunities for students throughout the day. And in addition to that, and just quickly, these red numbers that you see here are really the alignment directly to our implementation plan. So each of our goals that we've identified on our Site Council team, we've tried to layer it back directly to our implementation plan. So that's what those numbers represent. And if we look at these goals, there's a couple of things that kind of stand out to me and to our group as, as we were looking through these. Number one being our multi-tiered systems and supports. That's what Dr. Redden was kind of referencing with some of our math interventions and reading supports for both English and French throughout our school day. Personalized appropriately challenging lessons. So again, how can we constantly think about that student and what they need and make sure that each and every day, we're challenging those students and providing appropriate lessons? And then analyzing data. So that's something we did today. It's something we did at our first half day. And it's really thinking about how we can dive into that data to develop more appropriate lessons for our students. And then, as Dr. Redden referenced earlier, professional development continues to be an area where we get a lot of demand. So how can we provide high quality professional development for our staff? That's a challenge. It's a goal of ours. It's something that as a district, I know we focus on, but it's something that we continue to really prioritize in the school as well. And then there's two things before I turn it over to the next priority area. Two things that kind of came in this year. Ufly is something that I wanted to highlight as a real success so far within our district. So last year, we piloted it at Cunningham within our Cunningham, with our kindergarten team. We saw a lot of success for our kindergartners. So the district adopted it. It's an early literacy program that focuses on phonics. And so it supplements our current ELA program. And we, we find that it's been very successful. It's, it's been rolled out in all kindergarten, all the way up to grade two classes, as well as our French immersion third grade class. Great success with it so far. Teachers really enjoyed using it. And again, like I said, it's a perfect fill-in or supplement to the curriculum that we had last year. And then finally, Dr. Redden kind of already addressed it, but our reading support with the fourth graders and the fifth graders this year is a great improvement over what we had last year. The math intervention continues. And that was really successful. We have a great math interventionist again this year. But we also have that reading support throughout all grades, which is really beneficial for all of our students. The second priority area is, so if we go one more, is what I consider the soul of the school. And really, it's that climate, the culture and overall environment that we're trying to create at Cunningham. This again is a priority and something that I think we do really well. And it's really thinking about how we can make sure that all of our students feel safe, supported, involved, connected and included. And it's also thinking about the, the staff and their wellbeing. And I think that sometimes gets minimized or it sometimes doesn't get focused on enough. But it's an area where we continue to need focus on making sure that our staff is feeling heard, they're feeling comfortable, they're feeling successful at work. And we want to continue to highlight all their successes as well as the students. And then finally, before I turn it over, I just wanted to mention that, you know, diversity is very important to us. We celebrate diversity of our, of our students and our staff each and every day. And we, we talk about certainly what makes us unique, but also what connects all of us. And that's something that's really important for us. And as you walk the halls of Cunningham, it's certainly something that I think you'll, you'll all see. So talking about celebrations, I wanted to turn it over to Becky because it would be easy for me to talk about the culture and how it's created. But I think it's more powerful to hear from, from an outside perspective and a parent perspective on really what makes Cunningham and the culture at Cunningham unique and special.
Thank you. I have been a Cunningham parent for a very long time. My oldest is a sophomore. And when she graduated, my youngest started in kindergarten. So I have a fourth grader in Mrs. Caswell's class. And they have both loved their time at Cunningham. I think probably the proudest moments that they've had is when they received the Cougar Paws or the Positivity Awards. And the Cougar Paws are given out by teachers. They have them readily available. If they spot students being respectful, responsible or safe, they give them in the hallway, in the classroom, out on the playground. So wherever they see that great behavior, they always run in the door and like say that they have those. They're on the refrigerator. And then the positivity award is given out monthly and it's in front of the whole school. So if you're awarded that, that's a pretty big deal. And Claire won that last year. And that is permanently on her dream board in her bedroom. And I don't think that's going anywhere.
Anytime soon.
So some of the, to speak to how we can get involved, there are so many opportunities for families to get involved with Cunningham. I have been on the Site Council since Caroline. My oldest was in first grade. So they basically can't get rid of me. So sorry about that.
We haven't tried.
Sorry about that. But there's so many opportunities with the Site Council. People can get involved with PTO, DEIB committee. There's a lot of other committees that I'm not talking about right now either. But, and then we have events that are during school and after school. Some of the ones coming up are, we have the Pumpkin Parade coming up next week. The Veterans Celebration next month. We have the Parent Social next month. We always have parents that come in through the classes to do Meet the Artist and Reading About Diversity. So they can come and sign up for that. And what else am I missing? Oh, and now Claire's in the fourth grade. So she is super excited about the egg drop competition that she's heard so much about. So, so we're excited for that.
So all certainly, great examples of ways in which we try to create unity within the school. And then the last piece of the priority report is really thinking about the body of the school, which is the physical space. And that includes the budget. And like Dr. Redden said, we certainly have a lot of improvements to make with this area. It's something that we need to focus on. And we are, we are making the best use of space that you could possibly think of. But in order to strive for all those other areas, academic excellence and thinking about the overall wellbeing of the whole student and our staff, it's imperative that we have the right physical structures in place to provide those opportunities. And that's, again, we have, we have a lot of different, I guess there's, there's a lot of different challenges that we have, but a lot of solutions that have been presented by our staff. And I think that's a compliment to the, the professionals that work in our building. And it's, it's impressive to see what they, they've done. But for example, our math interventions works out of what was a supply closet. We do pullout services in a place that wasn't even as big as a closet. I mean, it was a place for water jugs to be stored. So there's a lot of limitations. And, and I think you all know that. And, you know, we'll continue to ask for improvements within the building structures because the space limitations are real. There's no question about it. That fourth grade in Cunningham Collicott would be very, very vital to the future success based off of our numbers and based off of everything that's going on within our district. We'll continue to ask for things like that. But I still want to highlight all the successes we're seeing because of the flexibility of our staff, because of the flexibility of our students and families. But everyone continues to ask for continuous improvements. And so we appreciate all the support we get from the people at this table. And then Dr. Redden already mentioned in terms of operations, he's thinking about common planning time. And what's great about common planning this time is we did revise our schedule so that there's more consistent common planning time. And the schedule allows teams to work together throughout the day and not just at their lunchtime and meet during their common planning time. It's also allowed opportunities for outside people to come into our common planning time. So that's curriculum directors have come in, members of our DEIB team have come in, and a number of other people have asked to come in and participate in some of those conversations, which lead to a lot more in-depth progress throughout the school, which is, which is great to see. And then finally, Becky wanted to talk a little bit more about communications because streamlined communications is something that's really important for our school as well.
Super important, especially as a busy mom juggling all the activities and everything else. They make it easy to be in the know, which is very helpful for me and probably other parents. So we have the weekly Cunningham Connection that's sent out. Our classroom parents also send out a newsletter that goes through everything that they're doing that week, what they're doing the following week and any important dates that we should probably already have on our calendar, which like today is half day that I didn't have on my calendar yet. So it was very helpful to have those pop up. But we also have classroom parents. So people, parents from PTO volunteer to give out any important information that's happening in the class, any dates, signups for Meet the Artist and RED lessons. And then also, we have active Instagram pages for Cunningham and for the PTO. So you can always go there and find out more information too. So it makes it a little bit easy because you're always in a million different places. So you can find it wherever.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we started when the slide deck is up there.
No one has mentioned time yet.
That's one, sort of just piggyback on some of the comments that have been made from our improvement goals. So the schedule, Andy was modest. He envisioned that schedule. There was like for, you know, 12 years, I put the schedule for Cunningham and Collicott together with Holly. And we had a kind of a fixed way of thinking about it. And he envisioned it approaching in a completely different way, where every day the teachers have like a block together where they can use that time for collaboration for most grades, not all grades. But like he is working towards that. So I want to commend Andy for just recognizing that and sort of approaching it and making those changes for this year. And also just talking about sort of the space. The teachers will make any space the best space for those students. Like they are not complaining. I was more worried about the teachers room going to the fourth floor than they. No one has approached me about the sort of limitations of being up there and, you know, without the walls and in the attic space. They are understanding that, you know, students' needs are priority. And if we have to make those sacrifices, it's for the greater good of what we're doing here at the Cunningham School. So I just want to commend that I let them out a little early today. So I know they're all watching. So I just wanted to make sure that I gave them that plug. Okay. And I'll go super quick and stop me whenever you're ready because I know you've seen a lot of this. So just looking at the MCAS and our accountability data, that's just the first slide that we cover. The 82% of meeting or exceeding points for 265 tested students. So that's what's sort of not up there. And I referenced that because in 2023, we had 79% of meeting exceeding points for 245 students. So the number of students increased and the percentage of students meeting or seeing their targets also increased, which is kind of left out when you sort of look at it sort of the cover. And I broke it down also by sort of the students on IEPs, this, the high need subgroup. And because when you look at it from year to year, sometimes it doesn't even look like a full student that's, you know, recorded because of how close the percentages are. So I wanted to focus on the body of students and the number of students that are being tested. So last year, we had 33 students on IEPs. This, I mean, sorry, two years ago, we had 33. Last year, with the data you're seeing now, it was 53. So just thinking about how those numbers tell a different story when we talk about bigger body of students in those subgroups. And you, sorry, I'm talking about next slide. And I didn't even say next slide. That's on me. So, so this, so this represents sort of the accountability, sort of the points. You can go to the next one. That's for math. If you go two more to MCAS data ELA. And this is what I just referenced quickly, that I'm happy to take questions that I know were running a long time. So when you talk about they have to have 20 students in that subgroup for them to have their, to count towards our accountability. And you can see from year to year, if you didn't know that total number of students tested, you would think that less students were passing or performing well, depending on, or more students. But the number for students in those subgroups has increased. So the percentage of those students that are doing well is also higher as well. So the way we approach that is why I gave the shout out about the PD today. Teachers can look at what students we're talking about and we don't have to present it this way as much. We can talk about the specific students who are in these subgroups, how we're, what we're doing for them in the classroom. And recognize that the growth that we want to see is happening over the course of the year. And yes, hopefully reflected then on this data later. But we want to make sure that they're having growth with the work that we're doing with them every single day. And this starts with taking that lift off of teachers to have to find the data in the first place. So now with the Performance Matters and all being in one place, it was actually interesting to hear, like some of the kindergarten teams didn't have data in there yet. And they were actually disappointed. They wanted to get started. They saw sort of the energy that was coming from the other groups that had the information that could do the that had the information and could do the work. And like that's the lift and the level of support that I'm saying. Um when we remove that from the teachers, they are ready to get into it because they understand the importance and the significance of using this information to um plan um instruction. All right, so again, the next few slides all the way up to the questions are just um more examples of things I'm willing to talk about um around the data from the MCASTs. Keep going, one more, one more. And this is a question, if you have time, there's a thirteen minute video there that Andy put together for the Cunningham experience. But I'll leave that for you.
Great music.
So thank you very much. And after that is our internal assessment data that um I think you covered a little bit last time. That it wasn't completed two weeks ago, so now that's a completed internal assessment data. Did I hit the fifteen minute?
Yeah, great job. That, we are getting more and more concise with these and you set a high bar for your colleagues coming after you.
See what happens when you go first.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um anyone have questions or comments?
No, uh all right, uh jump. Uh first off, uh your logo looks great, so. Shout out for that. And um yeah, I mean, I think just appreciate you all coming out. Um again, your accountability percentile rank being at ninety-two, you know, continues kind of a just really strong performance that obviously we've seen from Cunningham back since before I was here, right? And so uh just I know that comes with a lot of hard work to kind of maintain that level. Um so really appreciate uh all of that. Um a couple of questions, I wanted to know, you talked about again us being able to expand kind of reading intervention. Just for my own edification too, was that connected to kind of the, maybe this is more a question for you all of um the budget improvements we were able to make last year in terms of we added those extra, a couple of extra positions, right?
Yes.
This is kind of some of the impact, it's great, great to hear. Uh I would, hoping you could talk a little bit more about like the challenge you were mentioning around like needing to do pullout supports versus as much push in as you would like and just like what is causing that? Because I completely agree, I mean, the ideal is that we're pushing in and keeping the kids in the gym and classroom and being supported by both the separate teacher and the primary teacher at the same time.
So um what you don't, what you want to do is you want to um have students um. You want to make sure that all the classrooms have um students with different profiles and not sort of have to put um students all in one classroom, which is what you sometimes have to do when you have limited resources around staffing and people that are supporting. So what I always um am proud to say is that every classroom at any point could have multiple adults in there working with students, which is ideal and that's sort of what we want. Um and you never know which students need extra support because the adults have a schedule where they're going in there working with the groups of students and usually they're pulling other students into those groups to make a learning um center in those rooms. Um what happens when um you have one person covering sort of the math and you're using a criteria to say these students qualify based on their performance on these exams is now you have five students, each of the third grade classrooms, for example, and um one of the, everything comes with, you know, your schedule is great, but one of the things is when you get all the third graders, especially at the exact same time, that's a block you can't use because you're not pulling students through it. So then you don't want to pull them during the math which you're saying you, they need extra support in. So you have to think about like they're coming out of something um so that they can be together grouped from three classes because you don't have the number of reading teachers that you do in math, for example. So that's where um we are um a little um more tight with how we do the support. So what it looks like is a tier-two type of intervention, most of it happening out of the classroom. It didn't always look like that. We used to be able to sort of um do it, but there were less kids that qualified for it because we didn't. Um so um I already, the way we use to identify students because we didn't have a full-time math interventious person to do that. Now that we do, it's great, but now that we are looking at the students who have the need, we look for the up, best optimal time to um provide that need, which would be in the classroom, but then we'd be limited about how many students are receiving that. Not ideal, everything comes with the, because I'm not complaining, I'm just saying in reading, it doesn't need to look like that as much as it does in some of the other um areas where we have um limited staffing resources. In special education, it doesn't look like that, for example, which is, you know, great. You know, we have teachers that can go into all of the classrooms and provide support um in special education, starting with our collaborative program and um just relay services in general, including speech, OT. Like that is phenomenal. But as a practice, that's what we want it to look like.
Um just one more before I, uh my colleagues. Uh I'd love to hear that we're increasing common planning time, fantastic. So again, that's up to you, thank you for, for making that happen. I'd love to hear about um what are the grades where we're currently not able to do that? And then what are just the, the structures that are limiting your ability to kind of provide that? And I guess it's the third question, like how much common planning time are, are at this point we able to get standard?
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're basically limited by what is considered um a specialist where the teacher themselves can actually leave the classroom to the specialist teacher. And what's considered a specialist where they have to be in the classroom to support that specialist teacher. And kindergarten currently has um a, a structure in place where they have common planning time every day. As we start to get to each of the next levels between the French and Spanish times, it gets a little bit more tricky. Um a little trickier to actually put together a schedule that works for everyone. So you have to start to build in, so every other week, every grade level has at least two common planning times. Um and that's because every other week we have technology or library. So that adds an additional thirty minutes where we can utilize that time to pull those classroom teachers out of there to include them while other teachers in their grade level are at gym or at um so P E, music or art. So if we combine library with those other three um subject areas, because we only have four strands in each grade, it's, those are, those are times we can utilize as common planning time across each grade. So we're really limited just on, on contractually, when the teacher has to stay in the classroom to support the specialist teacher and when they can come up and when they have their own forty-five minute planning time.
And as you know, you can't make a schedule like Cunningham without making the schedule for Collicott. So they have classes where there's five grades, so they're even more limited on that flexibility. So we're fortunate enough that they only have four at each grade level. Um but they definitely have multiple um grades where they have five classrooms. So there's not enough specials to cover all those teachers at one time to have a, so um. And when that was, when we had that situation, we had to use the lunchtime, which is not ideal. Um but again, because the work is so important, teachers were willing to do it, but it's not our first choice to take their lunch block.
I, I have, I'll start with the sort of my comments overall. I think, you know, as a parent of a Cunningham um student, I gotta echo a lot of what I heard you say in terms of the opportunities to be engaged, stay informed. Even if you're crazy busy, there's always a piece of communication that comes in and you're like, oh yeah, that's right, that's coming up. And so I really appreciate that. And also a testament to the culture that you've created. I, I do feel that, you know, my kiddo was just talking about how sad she is to be a fifth grader, excited about what's coming next, but sad to leave her school. And that says a lot, right? When a kid's already anticipating that and, and just uh what comes with that, it's a mix of joy and at the same time sadness because this is a place where she's felt safe, she's been seen and heard. And so I thank you for, for the climate you've created, um because she's one of many kids that I know uh feel that way. Uh in terms of, I think I was looking and, and starting to think as we look ahead and plan for what we will need as a district and looking at um the, the reading support that we have right now, the math support. Um what, what sort of if, if numbers, if, if money was not, not a question, just thinking about what, what would you need, thinking about that, that pillar that you were talking about in terms of student excellence, right, academic excellence, what would be the ideal there? Um so sort of having you dream with us a little bit because I think that will help us as we go into budget conversations very soon. Um so that was one comment. And then I've just lost my other one, but I promise it'll come back, so I'll leave it at that right now.
Um I think what we are doing in reading is exactly what we, when I started, we had one shared English reading teacher shared with multiple schools in the only for, you know, first grade and second grade. Now we have all the way through fifth grade. It's um, they're still shared, but you know, we benefit from being connected to the others, um to Collicott. But I think that the thinking is if we're front-loading all these supports and providing for students and then we cut it off just because they entered a different grade level, you know, that's, uh, that was always a hard thing to explain to families, like why it looked like that. And then um, you know, the challenges that um come with, you know, going through S A C pro, process without having sort of um a true like N T S S structure in place to support um teachers. You're just putting more demand on the classroom teacher to um do that work. And I think um what we're doing in reading is addressing that. I think we're gonna get there in math. I think um sometimes it's not always the staffing, sometimes it's the PD that Andy spoke to. Um expanding um sort of the capacity of the teachers to provide some of those um interventions to the students themselves, I think is something you can only get out of like having um good PD available for teachers. So I think get the staffing piece, you don't necessarily need the structure to say we don't have enough spaces anyways to put in more staff. But if you think about the continuous work that's involved in having good professional development so that teachers are um knowing what, when they look at the data, then they know, you know, what they can do to support the students to make that growth um in their own skillset. And again, it does always have to be a one teacher leveraging the expertise in the school. It's sort of the continuous work that's always going to have benefits for um school. So that's why I wanted to make sure I shouted out Andy and the schedule that he put together because that now um is something that could be sustainable with a little bit of an increase for, you know, library every week instead of every other week, you know what I mean? Those are like smaller things that will get um a bigger, you know, bang for the buck for lack of better words. Um and you already just recently did that with art and music, we made it full-time. So I'm not trying to say, now let's do it again, like this is already showing that it worked when you increased art, music and um. On this one, art, full-time art, music um teachers. Um so that we can have, you know, school-based people and provide these schedules um for teachers. So it already shows that it works and um I think that that is creating the flexibility needed to um support the teachers to um, you know, look at data and um collectively um work together to create those intervention groups across the grade level. Um and I think Chris, you last week spoke about what that looks like in science and it'd be great to replicate a version of that at all the grade levels um because it does work and it does um take a huge leap off of teachers to be the experts in all those subject areas, all those times for students that are completely struggling. That answer.
Yes, it did. And my other question came, came back, or at least that I think a piece of um data that perhaps, you know, you may have right now, but, but maybe not. But I think overall, when we have these presentations, um in terms of the, the teachers and sort of who's in the building, I think that for me would be really important. And I just hear, right, I've, I've talked to different parents and I know there's quite a number of new, new teachers and there's been transitions, et cetera, which then prompted the question perhaps more for a district level. Of what do we do, what are we doing as a district to support sort of new teachers? And thinking about sort of just the issue overall nationwide, of how do we make sure that we get great new teachers and teachers stay? Um and so just wondering how much we're, we're working on supporting them as they are engaging and beginning their career. And I know that a lot of the time, it's, it's really, it's the classroom management that sometimes can take the most energy out of them, um which I hope it doesn't sort of take away from the joy of teaching. Um but um just really thinking about it, just from a district perspective, what are we doing to support our new teachers um so that we can retain them?
It's funny, we were, we were actually talking about that earlier today. It's vital. I mean, having quality educators in the building and retaining them is incredibly important to the success of the students. And not only are the classroom teachers really important, but it's the collaboration and the ability to bring in different staffing resources from the, from within the building and within the district to support them throughout the day is vital. So having behaviorists that come into the classroom and help those teachers out with those classroom management techniques um is something that our behaviorists do constantly and our counselors do constantly. And when you see that happen, you see them grow instantly, but not just in terms of their overall skills, but their overall confidence. Because you know, as a teacher, there's a lot of pressure on you. You know, there's outside pressures, there's worries about what's legality of things um and saying the right thing and saying the wrong thing sometimes. And, and it's going to be misrepresented when those students might go home and say that this happened in school. Might not be an accurate depiction. So having support that comes in and helps those new teachers or any veteran teacher is really, really important. And I think we do a really good job of getting those people in the classroom. Um in addition to the people that would come in just on regular basis, there's also mentoring that happens throughout the district. So each new um staff member will be assigned a mentor. It's typically within the building, but it could also depending, say it's a French teacher, they might be paired up with a French teacher from another school. Um they meet regularly um as part of the mentoring program and it is a two-year program. So great resources for them. Um there's professional development that happens before the school year starts for those new staff. Um and then there's ongoing professional development that happens. Um again, when I was a brand-new teacher, I, we had lots and lots of professional development opportunities throughout the year. And even coming in as someone who had taught for ten years, those were extremely important to understand um the culture within Milton and also just understanding um how things function and how you can get things done properly and who to talk to within the district. So yeah, I, I, I think all of that is really important. It's something we constantly have to work on, but it's something that in many, many places, we do really well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the best thing we could do is to invest in our teachers that we have because they are doing, you know, this great work, um with the scores, they're doing um the great work, you know, collaborating, working um with each other with, you know, the combines um that we have at Cunningham. And generally, when um teachers are um understanding that their successes and their wins and um that we can keep their sort of positive energy going, that's when you worry less about sort of them, you know, leaving because you want, like, again, we want to make sure that teachers have what they need so that, you know, their success is all of our success here. And like I always tell them, like, no parent is like, oh, I gotta go there because Dr. Redden's there. Like they're going there because they hear about the awesome teachers and the, you know, learning environments that they create um every single day. And then, yes, they might like Dr. Redden as a result of this great teacher that they have. And that is what I tell them because sometimes it does get hard, you know, sometimes, you know, things um, you know, can be um sort of challenging. Um behaviors or things in the classroom, PBS has helped a lot. This, you know, redirecting by focusing on the positive behaviors and always emphasizing that every single day with our announcements. I think has been a plus, but bringing teachers in, so we give awards to them too, like, you know, we, I'm trying to celebrate with them too. And again, even more time like we had today will play like huge difference because they were able to speak and work together and not in these like classrooms in these silos. And you know how Cunningham is built, like there are some rooms by themselves, you know, before you see it. So I think all those things will help um us retain, but the investment in the teachers is the best thing we could do, for sure.
And also one more thing I just want to add real quick that as Dr. Reddard was talking, I was thinking about getting into the classroom is so important for both of us. People need to be observed, they, they want to get feedback. And the more often we can get into the classroom and, you know, provide that positive feedback and reinforcement to those staff members, again, the more successful and the more they want to be there because that's what creates the culture. If, if they're not getting feedback, if they're not feeling as though, you know, we care, then it all crumbles from there. We have to show that we care by visibly being in those classrooms each and every day, or as much as possible at least.
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna say that I obviously miss Cunningham very, very much. I, we are a couple of years out and uh all that you said totally made me feel nostalgic about all the times that I've been in the building and felt everything that you're talking about. So that has been incredible and it's so nice to hear all of that because it's reminded me how much I miss coming there. So I might have to pop in, right? And just.
I still get lost when I'm there, but it's been a while.
But I have to say, I mean, everything like even my. But I have to say, I mean, everything like even my kids, when they went through there, like the the culture and that sense of belonging that my kids felt way before all of this. And I'm so glad that you're kind of building on that and the supports that we've been able to add the last couple of years in terms of math and reading has really shown improvements. And those are, that's all from the feedback that you guys have provided over the years, you know. So hearing from you is so important to us because we want you to be successful, we want to invest in the teachers, we want to make sure that they're happy, we want to do everything we can about the space situation, we totally understand and, you know, we've we've been in those spaces and we we feel your struggles. So um, you know, we're just so grateful that you are so open with us and direct with us and tell us what's going on because that's how we know, you know, it's like, um, and this is, this is so important for us as we make decisions. I mean, we've got to make some decisions tonight. So, you know, all of those things um is um really helpful to us. So we're really glad that you're here. We, I mean, you know, my kids love their community experience, you know, probably favorite principal and assistant principal ever. So um, so thank you so much for all that you're doing and continue to do.
Thank you.
Would you say the bill? Sorry.
I have two.
No, I just had um just a couple of number questions and I feel very left out because my kids went to Glover and so I cannot weigh in on the the love fest, but it sounds amazing. Um, I just had two questions, um it's on your slide with the numbers. So the number, so number of uh for counseling, how many is it, are they adjustment counselors? And how many do you guys have?
We have one adjustment counselor.
One for, and is it uh shared or just for?
Yeah.
Okay, for 36. And then student support, what what does that entail?
Yep, so student support is um where we refer students and a group of um educators come together and talk about um a usually an eight-week plan that they're gonna put together to sort of monitor a student around, you know, academics, behavior, whatever, um sort of they the referral was for. And um we put sort of those numbers in because those are like the number of students we're tracking right now. Um, it's right currently, um those numbers can fluctuate as the year goes on, but that's where we are sort of right now. And Maureen Butler, our inclusive specialist, runs those meetings as well.
Okay. And then how, what's the breakout, how many, um, just out of curiosity, French immersion classes?
So we have one um French immersion class, I, from first grade to fifth grade.
One in each grade, okay.
And three English classes at each of those grades.
Thanks.
Um, sorry, uh, two other questions I I think you're pointing on again, like how we value and support teachers is great. And again, maybe this is for our district, but like, do we do any surveys of teachers, of their workplace satisfaction to like get, do we have any data kind of on teacher experience and uh other than obviously the direct communication that y'all have and the relationships you build, which is absolutely vital, but.
So another positive thing we brought this year to the PD time is the surveys at the end of it. So we will get that information today. I just happened to wanna um put together a shared document that they can sort of use in case they were coming up short on ideas about like what other teams were doing with the data because they were all around the building. But um, but again, it does include a survey that, so the PD today started with feedback from the last PD day around the takeaways and um, you know, the comments from made by teachers. And I'm assuming the next one will also start with the feedback from this one today. As far as like a general survey school based on sort of um, that is definitely something we can think about, consider. I think the way we approached it was being out there and making sure that um we're ahead of things and not waiting for things and sort of um, you know, getting texts from them and helping them out as needed and we sort of being more visible. But I definitely think a more formal or um approach to getting that information would be something to consider moving forward.
Yeah, and again, I think maybe that, to me, that would even be interesting to see across beyond just a single school, but just across sites, just what is the, I think the feedback on PD in particular is, again, a great idea and a way to improve that kind of an ongoing iterative basis, but just beyond that, just the overall experience of being staff, especially, you know, difference between new staff and um experienced staff. Um, just your point on observations also, completely agree with really pushing the classrooms, the importance of that. Uh, I will highlight that you have a a very large school and there are two of you, uh and so the ability for you to get in classrooms, significant amount of time, given everything else you're doing with running the school and relationships with families and all of that, like just probably challenging and uh saying off the top. So I guess my question is like between what y'all are able to do and any other district positions that kind of come in and support with curriculum implementation, teacher support, do you have an estimate about like how often are teachers, do people push, are people able to get into classrooms and provide teachers feedback?
Yeah. Even a rough. Yeah, I mean, if if you're just talking about both Dr. Redd and I, I would say um on average, we we would go into every classroom two to three times a week. Um, so that's, you know, it might be a short observation, um depending on what's happening within the classroom, but we do a quick check-in. I mean, if if the check-ins not daily and it could be from a window, it could be like everything good, need anything, nope, all all set and they'll just, you know, kind of wave and we'll move on to the next, to walking into the classroom, participating in the lesson that's happening, um or observing it and then just providing feedback afterwards on a quick sticky note or something um a little bit more formal than that. It's two to three times that that would happen um each week. And and again, there's 24 different classrooms from from K to K to five. And again, the building's not big, um it's easy to do that, but again, the impact it has is just so powerful enough that it it's just a priority, a priority for for us, so.
So one of the first things I learned um is if you walk into a classroom and everything stops because they're so excited to see you because they haven't seen you in a while, then it's been too long. So I try to um use that as my gauge to like how, when was the last time I was in here? And again, it's, again, sometimes, you know, you get pulled away or you start visiting some more classrooms more than others, um because just because of the support you're providing, you're covering the classes because of shortages and things like that. But um one of us, including Mrs. Butler, who um is very visible um in the building as well, we'll always try to make sure that um teachers know that, you know, we could be around, they are available to them, even if it's just for coverage or if it's just to check in informally, um which I think does the best level of support as opposed to going in there and doing like those written observations and those formal observations because those we do have individual people we are working with for those.
Well, thanks again for this. It's been a great conversation on top of a great presentation and um it's really exciting to um hear all this great work that's happening, so.
Thank you for your support.
Keep up the, keep up the amazing work. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get done watching this video, so I'm gonna watch it later. Peter, is there anything else under superintendent's report for you tonight?
That is it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so for the chair's report, I just wanted to um start by mentioning one um, one quick thing. I had the opportunity on Monday to attend an event um that I know we were invited to along with the whole community, which was hosted by the Milton Coalition. Um, it was to celebrate their 10-year anniversary, working here in Milton for um prevention of um substance use as well as mental health for young people in town. And I know that at our last school committee meeting, it was really great to have them here, helping us to sort of process our latest data um that they have helped us to track and to see really good trends as far as our own um students in in Milton. Um, I just wanted to report and to share with the community for folks who weren't able to go there that um they were, in addition to celebrating the 10-year anniversary of the Coalition and presenting highlights of the data that um that we have been able to see, um they welcomed Kathy and Chris Sullivan for a presentation of Sullivan's message. This um husband and wife team had visited with our 10th and 11th graders earlier in the day um to share their stories about alcohol, loss, mental health and addiction. So powerful the stories that they shared. And I'm mentioning it because um I think we should, we can all look out for, the Coalition will be sending a recording of that presentation. Um, I believe it will be available for one month following the time they send it out. Um, and just really encourage all of us to watch it, to encourage our friends to watch it, um and our and our kids, if that's age-appropriate. Um, and I also just wanted to mention that they really took pains to talk about how like positive and engaged the Milton High students were with their presentation. They um speak in many high schools and middle schools throughout um really like the Northeast. And so that was really great to hear, um, the the feedback about our students being so respectful but really thoughtful and engaged in the important but difficult um conversations that they are, they are helping us to have about how to be safe um and to take care of one another. So really shout out again and thank you to the Milton Coalition for bringing that um story to us here. Um, beyond that, the only other topic um under Chair's report for this evening is just to kind of touch base again on um this conversation we be, we're touching on with our student reps recently, um about the process for the FY26 school year calendar. Um, and as it relates to the student reps, that's specifically, you know, the ongoing conversation about holidays. Um, and so I just wanted to mention that um I think we're in the process of sort of thinking through our ways to gather community input into this and stakeholder input. Um, and we have not yet sort of come out with our plan for that. Um, and if people have ideas, you know, we can sort of talk through some of that right now. Um, but I do just want to reassure our community and our stakeholders that, you know, within these next couple of weeks, I think we should be able to begin announcing what some of these opportunities will be. Um, to, we have been hearing from the students, which is amazing, and Bow, I don't know if you want to kind of um talk anymore about their role in this process, but I just want to make sure we're also, you know, naming that um we we have sort of decided that um a particular, like a a committee, uh, a task force was not going to be the sort of best strategy necessarily. We want to be sort of inclusive and provide, whether it's a community forum is one idea that has come up, um we just need to kind of move forward with scheduling uh that. And I think we also can look at meeting, um, you know, setting up meetings with stakeholders who have been involved in this conversation over the past um couple of years, but even going back further, you know, are who, the people that we know um and leaders in town who will be important to consult with as well. So um, anyone, Bow, is there anything you want to add to that from the lens of the student representatives' participation?
I think you summarized almost everything that we have been discussing at the um student representative meetings. The the students are very proactive, they they have a lot of opinions and suggestions. Um, they also have talk talk about ways to collect uh feedbacks from the community, including uh interviews with principals and vice principals in at different schools and also talking to their peers, um during advisory times or in other kind of like student assembly meetings. But this is a very time-consuming task, but is, the deadline is approaching as well because um the um the calendar for the next school year had to be set by the um the end of December. So we we talk about how we can make it feasible within our already busy time. So um is, it seems to be, um, so right now, as you have mentioned, we we haven't have a formal plan out yet, so we'll see how how to formally do it.
And I think we'll, we know we'll need to have like clear progress on this by our next meeting um in order to sort of invite people to participate in sort of later November into early December would be the timeframe to um provide these, you know, mechanisms for community input. So it will need to come together quickly, um, but.
But are, Brenda, are we thinking that um we would take leadership in collaboration with the youth representatives or the student representatives to be able to have the conversation with a broader group of stakeholders, right?
Yes.
That's what we're thinking? So, because I'm wondering, um, you know, the community, the forums might not be the best mechanism for this type of conversation. It, given my past experience, I feel like they can be spaces that draw camps, like sort of like opposing camps to the conversation rather than having a more representative um group. And one of the sort of in just, you know, brainstorming that I I think Peter and I just did, um as we were thinking about this, um was, could we possibly host conversations at each of the schools? Do you know where maybe two of us pair up and we say we're gonna take that school and open it up maybe for a morning meeting, an evening meeting or an invite, right? If folks can't go to the Cunningham meeting, they can go to the Glover meeting and that's okay. It's not just by the schools, but it's more sort of a more intimate conversation that allows folks to say, you know what, this is great, but my concern is this, or I'm fully supportive of recognizing everything, whatever it is. But having more intimate conversations rather than this forum structure that can feel like it doesn't get us to the most productive conversations.
Yeah. Oh, no, absolutely. I don't, I don't think um repeating um forums of old, I will call them, that that is not, uh, you know, I I think so much has changed honestly here, um and we're really, you know, I think actually you're making, um, thinking about the model for the learning, listening and learning tour that Peter did uh last year, school by school, I think could be a good idea. And I, you know, as long as, I think we all know it's going to require of us, even if it's two by two or sort of making that plan, um, a way to sort of disperse and provide those opportunities and, you know, hopefully perhaps an in-person and a virtual element to, you know, like you're saying, different times of day. But um, you know, I think having all these ideas out there is what we've been working towards. Um, the next step will be to just actually coalesce around a plan. So Anna, were you gonna say something?
Um, yes, I can, um, I guess my thought is, I like the idea of doing the more intimate settings similar to the listening, learning tour. I also like perhaps if there were some sort of like small group activity to kind of, you know, because again, when you were talking about like camps, like, right, like you could still have like, no, I I don't think we need any holidays or we should celebrate all of them, like, how do we come to kind of a consensus, right? So like, there should be some sort of small group breakout where you kind of figure things out and maybe it evolves into something else that might be a better solution, you know. So I think having more discussions versus just like giving general feedback, that kind of we all collect and then we just have feedback might be, you know, like, how do we, how do we brainstorm around this and kind of collaborate and figure out what the best solution for our district was? And provide opportunities for parents or and um community members to say, hey, this is, this is what I would like to see more of, how do we get there? Like, and I, you know, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering too if, when we're talking about the discussions, it, is it coming in with um with thoughts around the way it would be or is it more of an open discussion for feedback? I just don't know where in the process we are. But I guess my, my follow-up to that would be, is there the opportunity for people who couldn't come to a listening session or come to something for, you know, whatever reason, for them to be able to provide feedback? Like, is there something that we could work with the schools to, you know, the principals to give to families or give to like a survey? Or is it an open-ended question? Or some way that you can get the feedback from people? I guess that's where my question comes around. Is it more open-ended or is there sort of a, are there thoughts already in place as to what the changes look like, if that makes sense?
So the survey have been discussed in our meeting as well. So we were thinking about like, if we have as a board decided on what are the options for our district, then we can put it into our principal's weekly emails. Then the community members, the parents who get, receive email from principals, they'll be able to provide feedbacks on that. And we also talk about including in Peter's superintendent email as well. So a survey have been discussed for sure.
So we looking to do these forums in like the November, December timeframe? Like in the next couple of, is that the plan?
I mean, honestly, it's probably going to be in a very compressed timeframe. At this stage, realistically, it might be like the week after Thanksgiving. I mean, I'm not committing to anything. I'm just sort of thinking realistically about the fact that, you know, at our next meeting, two weeks from now is when we will need to really have, I think, a solid plan and then be able to roll it out from there. But I think it's, I think we are ready to do this because we've been discussing it. We have the help from the students, you know? I think it's just a question of sort of setting it up and launch, you know, rolling it out. And just to name that, you know, yes, Amanda, I think it would be helpful to sort of provide pieces for folks to respond to. But, you know, in the context of like, we basically have three general options, which would be like, we keep things as they are. But we, as this group, have basically over the course of last year, come to an agreement that the way things are currently is not really supporting our goals of being inclusive. Another option would be to add more holidays, as we've talked about. Another option would be to, which other districts have also done in addition. Some have added more, some have removed holidays in the name of sort of equal treatment. So it's, these are the basic questions. I think that, again, we will be doing outreach to our stakeholders. We'll be setting up, I think, what this Listening Learning opportunity will constitute. And then I think a short, like a survey type of a component would be really great. And we can figure all that out. And we're not, I mean, this is one of those things for us as school committee members that we know we're not going to make everybody happy. People are not going to see this the same way. And our goal in collecting the input is to inform us in making what seems to be the right decision for the district overall. And I think I will do our best to do that. And also just to name, you know, when, when relevant, you know, this will also be making, this will be sort of folding into our bargaining process. When, when, if what we're talking about is our proposing changes that would need, that are sort of currently in our contract. So that wouldn't be all the changes that may be recommended, but it may be some of them. So just to kind of keep that in mind. We are going to work within this system to make what progress we can. And, you know, I think we're hoping to have a draft calendar set up by January, if not the end of December. And, you know, we will do our best with that timeline. And we know that it is ultimately somewhat flexible too. So we will kind of not rush to do this. But try to bring this process to a good closure point. So we continue on that. Finance, is anyone, everyone else, everyone good on that? Okay, so finance would be next.
Yes, Finance Committee met this morning.
We just wanted to begin and end our day together as a whole school committee.
That's right. Just for public, again, to keep the conversation into the turn of your budget. We were able to listen to you on the floor, sharing with everybody. We had a chance to talk to Katie about this morning. And Katie, thank you for all of your work that you were doing. Guide us through the process. We are just kind of in the initial stages of budget planning for next year. Katie and Peter are much further along with kind of internal conversations. Great, thank you, sir. All right, they heard none of that. So FY25 is what we talked about this morning when we met. And then we're starting the budget process, starting some of the collaboration with the other committees this week, Friday, and then next week with Select Board and the Warrant Committee. So excited for all that and for all the work we've done thus far. I have two motions under Finance. We have Vendor Warrant Report Number 14, which I've signed and shared with y'all. We also have 15, which I just signed and have not shared with y'all. So that will go out as soon as I get the electronic copy from Gail. But I will make a motion to approve Vendor Warrant 14 in the amount of $583,581.53 payable on 10/17/24, as well as Vendor Warrant 15 in the amount of $555,915.14 payable on 10/24/24. Sir, second?
Second?
Thank you. All in favor? They are approved. I think that's it for Finance, unless any other, other committee members have anything to add.
Thank you. So since we approved the agenda, I realized that we had an oversight here on our agenda because it doesn't say vote. It says attachment next to what should be the second reading for our manual Section H recommendations. So I crossed out the motions because I think we can't take a vote on these tonight. Because we need to have the word vote on our agenda. So apologies for that.
This is the second reading?
Oversight, it's the second reading. So, you know, any member of the public would know that we are having this second reading vote. But just to be really careful in following open meeting law, we're not going to take a vote on this tonight. However, if anyone has questions about any of the recommendations that Anna, you presented last time, I think we could still discuss those. And then, Anna, I'm sorry about that, but if we could just take the vote under policy at our next meeting. And I'm sorry to just jump in and mess up your report before you were even able to start.
That's, that's, that's okay. It is not. I actually. So it, from our last meeting, it was only a first reading. So we wouldn't vote on it anyway today. Because we met last, this, tonight should be the second reading for H.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's the first, it's the first one because I just went through my notes from our last meeting.
Yeah, we voted on G.
We voted on G.
Last week.
Oh, I'm sorry. So yes. It was a very.
Don't listen to me.
No, no, no. So it was a very short section.
Then we don't need to vote, obviously, because it is a first reading.
And I think.
Sorry, everybody.
So there is that document in your folder that has the Section H recommendations. Basically, there is only, and, you know, our meetings are cross-posted, but you get better attendance than I do. So it's definitely not as exciting. But basically, just a short version, there are eight policies in the MASC. And MASC only has three for Section H. Five are basically all NASDAQ policies from 2005. So they're mostly redundant and unnecessary. So the remaining three, which are HA, which is Negotiation Goals. MPS doesn't currently have this policy. So we're going to recommend adopt the MASC version. HB is the Negotiations Legal Status, that MASC has a simpler version. So we're going to recommend to adopt that one. And then HF, which is the School Committee Negotiating Agent Policy. The MASC version refers to hiring a negotiator. And the MPS version refers to the Negotiations Subcommittee. The MPS version is specific to us. So we're, so we want to reaffirm that particular policy. But it was a very short meeting. So we're very efficient getting through H. But if you have any additional questions, like Glenn has been so nice to put together a little explanation for each one.
Thank you. But it was a short meeting, but it made a big impression on me because I thought I had already gone a first reading as well.
Can I just go back to Finance for a second?
Oh, sure.
I know, I was just, I just, so I was driving this morning, so I couldn't put my camera on. But I just want to say, Katie, phenomenal job explaining everything. I don't think I've ever understood it until now. So I am really, really blown away. And I really love, you know, the way you explained everything and how, gosh, I'm blanking at the moment. But I was just, I was going to send you an email after that, saying that. Like, I was just really like, really impressed with like the thoroughness that you explained everything to us, which was really helpful for me to kind of understand as we get into this budget process, even though I'm not on the budget sub, you know, Finance Subcommittee. It was really helpful to kind of have that mindset going into it. And I think in the past, like, we're not able to think about it. So actually, when I was listening to the Cunningham presentation, it was helpful to have that conversation in the back of my head when they were talking about resources, right? Like, and I was like, it's like, oh, that's so important to have, you know? So it was really helpful. So I know a lot of work went into that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I told her I did have to look up the word unencumbered again. And Mark, obviously, thank you for running a great meeting every, every other Wednesday or whatever it is, keeping us on track. This is good. Thank you.
So does anyone have any questions on Section H?
Sure. Okay, so Amanda, Student Services Task Force. So on Monday, we had the first meeting of the Student Services Task Force. So it's a, a group, it's pulled together of MPS employees. So people who are in special education, they might, there's people who are instructional. So people who are instructional assistants, just a cross-section of people. We're hoping to get somebody from the CPAC to join. And so Danielle Wetmore has pulled it together, who's head of Student Services. And the goal is really to look across the year, the remainder of the year, at the role of the Instructional Assistant. So that role, the name, I appreciate that they've kind of changed it. Some people know them as a one-to-one, some people know them as a para. So it's really the support staff for students who are on an IEP who may need support for any number of things. And so the goal of this is really to begin to better define what that role is, how they're trained, how they're hired, have some consistency across the district. I appreciated a lot Danielle's openness in this. She didn't come in with any really, I guess I would say ego in the, you know, thinking that she had a handle on everything that was going on in every district. So she was very open to hearing feedback from people and, and sharing sort of where some of the challenges were, what's working well and what's not. So unlike a committee where we might come and make decisions around things, the task force is really, the goal is to come together and maybe provide some recommendations on how this system can be improved and changes that could be made. So this, as I said, this was the first meeting and will be meeting monthly through the end of the year. Any questions about it? But it was very, it was, it was very enlightening. It was really helpful. I have to admit, at first I was like, we're going to spend a whole year on, you know, I was just thinking of it differently. But then as people talked about some of the challenges and things, you, you begin to see that, you know, I think in my head, everything was sort of centered in Student Services. And what I realized is it's not, like, it's very siloed. And so how one school works with IAs and hires them and trains them is very different than how another school might. So I think it's really important to have these conversations, especially as, you know, we were talking about the role of the IA and it's, you know, it, it, the number needed changes every year. So then it's even really like, how, you know, how are they supporting students? What's the need? Is there the ability for shared services, that sort of thing? So it was very helpful, really helpful. So I'll provide updates or anything interesting that comes out of them monthly.
What's the makeup of the, the task force?
It's made up of people who volunteered. So there are, right now, it's predominantly MPS staff. So there are people who are in special education, adjustment counselors, teachers, an instructional assistant. As I said, hopefully there's somebody from the CPAC who will join. And then let, and then the Student Services stuff.
Gotcha.
Thank you for representing the school committee on that task force. And glad it's off to a good start. Look forward to the reports. Thank you. Next, we have School Building Committee report.
You want to take this one?
Yeah, so we met this past Monday. And we, I did walk sort of in the middle of the conversation. So please just make sure that I capture it correctly. But the architects did present revised, refined drawings. And so we did have a conversation on that. And we are now going to, we're waiting for revised numbers, right? That are informed by the more.
And so I could put on my coat while making noise. Not that bad fired.
So we did meet on Monday. And we, you know, look, went over, we refined drawings from the architects. And now that is back to, so we can get our cost estimates based on that. Obviously, there might be some changes, but hopefully not too many. But that, that's going to inform some of that. There were some, you know, just things that we needed to look at, like where the back of the house was going to be located was not the right location in terms of traffic flow, et cetera. So that was in the newer drawings. And so that, that was the, that was good. And in addition to that, we didn't cover a lot of new business. But we are going to be waiting on sort of our, our next steps. We did go over scenarios. If we end up going, being selected by the, what's the?
MSBA.
MSBA, thank you. It's late at night. MSBA, if we do get selected, just to look at, starting to look at projections of what the costs would be and the benefit. So right now, those are assuming that we would hit go right away. But in reality, it would be about two to three years out before we would hit go. So we do have to take that into account as we look at the cost of construction and the cost of the project overall, based on what we would get back from MSBA as a project. So I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I don't know if you have them. But if you want to walk, sort of, folks through it, one of the things to keep in mind is while the percentage of what it would cover is, one, the reality that is that we wouldn't get the entire amount. And so we did sort of end up looking at projections and seeing what the benefit would be. But it's early in that, but we thought it was worth starting that exercise as we get closer to an answer from MSBA.
Yeah, on that piece, I think it was broad, like reimbursement numbers. And again, our OPM is the one who pulled this together. It was like, you know, 45.32 is what the MSBA said, is our this year's reimbursement rate. We don't know what our next year's will be. But off of that, they kind of did the calculations. And ultimately, like, the actual reimbursable cost kind of brought their contribution down to about 28%, which they said seems to be in line with what they see. That was like based upon MSBA's calculation sheet and seemed to be in line with what their experience was on other projects in terms of that delta between what the reimbursement, stated reimbursement rate, maximum reimbursement rate is and what the actual one is. So being, I think they're looking to redo that assessment once we get the updated numbers. Because essentially, again, the designers have now taken us through design drawings versus the prior cost estimate was feasibility, so we know more about the project. So we're getting that updated number, which should be in about three weeks, is I think what they said. So once we get that back, they can redo this analysis. They also got some feedback from committee members on just how to make the chart, you know, more clear and other, good discussion.
The other thing I think to note with those sort of estimates that we looked at is that it assumes that the project stays the same, right? In terms of what's embedded in the current number that we have in terms of the cost of the project, classroom sizes are smaller than what MSBA would require us to do. So there would be obviously tweaks, I think, to happen. And we would go through the exercise all over again. But just, it's important for us to know that those estimates that we saw in terms of the benefit of MSBA is assuming that the project stays the same. So I think it's important to know that we would have to have larger classrooms, slightly larger classrooms.
Is part, can I ask a question? So is part of the MSBA process, if I remember hearing correctly? It's also, but it would also be a reset, right? Like essentially, so the plan that we have now has small. You could assume, not, maybe not correctly, but if we have to make the classrooms larger and meet their criteria, then the cost in actuality to build to the specs of the MSBA could increase the cost.
Could increase, or we would have to give up other.
Other pieces in order to hit the, so that we hit the same number based on cross-.
Just a lot of.
It's a lot of considerations we would have to make.
Yeah, exactly.
But, so doesn't the MSBA also, like, if they could come and do a whole feasibility study of their own and figure out what, it could be a completely different solution than an upper middle school and pre-K, it could be something else, right? Or would they do that if that's what we're recommending?
We would have to walk through the entire process again.
My timeline is, what is it, like, seven years?
They said five to seven years.
So from the, from when we get selected to when we finish the project or like, okay. Where does it stand as far as, like, town process?
It's a good question. School Building Committee has still recommended, right, voted the two warrants for the design funding and then full project funding. They have made that recommend, we have made that recommendation, passed that to Select Board, that is also in front of this board, although we don't have a vote on that today. But ultimately, the one that matters is the Select Board vote to put it on the warrant. Select Board just this week started talking about February town meeting dates. And the reason for February, from the conversations, seemed to be around because then if the full school project request is on that meeting and town meeting votes yes for it, you have to have a town-wide vote on it within 90 days. And so then you could align that with the April election without having another separate special election. So, yeah, so Select Board, it's essentially in front of Select Board. Select Board, it has to vote to put it on, they have to set a February town meeting vote to put the warrant articles on the town meeting. And then it goes to Warrant Committee for their opinion on it, obviously, you know, better than the rest of us. But that is where it stands. But they haven't made any formal decision on it yet.
And before, whenever the town meeting is happening, before that happens, the School Committee will need to make a recommendation, you know, either to affirm the recommendation we made in the summer or to do something different. So I think that's why it's helpful to continue to learn what's being discussed at School Building Committee. And then we, as you're saying, Selena, we continue to sort of consider the various pieces that are important to think through. I was going to have a question from a time. So depending, the timing for the MSBA decision, would that give us, would that give enough time to do the comparison analysis you guys have talked about between, like, the cost-benefit analysis? And then to get in front of the Select Board, for them to have time to make the decision to have a meeting in February? Like, I don't know the timeline. Is that, do those?
Expect to hear in November.
Okay.
November, early December. So that's when we would hear. But we will have sort of refined numbers sooner than that.
Okay.
And then we would use the same, you know, template that MSBA uses. So we could sort of plug in those numbers and still do that and be ready. That's what we would do if we were ready to consider, consider that area in the process.
And the MSBA, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions and I'll let somebody else talk. I'm trying, I'm trying. The MSBA decision is a decision, right? It's not like a decision for the next step, it's a decision. Is that correct?
It's an invitation.
It's an invitation. Okay.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
They wouldn't then kick us out.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
We would then choose to join or not join.
Okay.
At some point, we could pull out if ultimately.
Okay. But it's not like step three of 17. It's just, that's it. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, to your point, though, on timing, I think, I'm not sure how long Select Board has to announce a town meeting before. So my expectation, I think, would be that they're going to set the town meeting before we're going to know about MSBA.
Okay.
Because they're going to need to, just from like, to give runway. And then we're going to find out about MSBA. And then if we find out no on MSBA, right, that has no bearing really on the, probably the next steps, and found out yes on MSBA, could have bearing, right? We could still move forward with a conversation at town meeting about, like, do we go forward with one or the other? Or I guess Select Board, again, given they control the warrant, could choose to pull that warrant article or, you know, School Building Committee could choose to pull the warrant article. Like, there's a couple of things that happen there. It gets a little bit messy. But again, as I've said, that'd be probably a good problem to have if we have that option.
You even mentioned that the MSBA is not going to cover the whole cost of the project, right?
Yes.
And according to some of the meetings that I heard about the project, that roughly, the most that they recover is like 50% of the project cost.
No, they're not going to cover, that's too high. Well, it depends on if MSBA changes what their reimbursement rate would be for the town. Unlike, right now, it's 45.32. That's what they told us in the walkthrough. So it's, I don't think it's ever jumped up that much. That wouldn't be an expectation. So that's the maximum reimbursement. But then again, there are lots of non-reimbursable expenses. There's like square footage maximums, there's other things. And that's essentially what Selena was sharing as to, like, what our consultants, the owner-project managers, who've done this a lot, have gone through as they've used the MSBA analysis tool that essentially the MSBA does or has OPMs do to help set that reimbursement number. And so going through based upon our current estimates and designs, our OPMs did that. And that's where they got to the, again, ultimately, like, the reimbursement rating around 28% of the total of the $173 million cost.
So the town still have to absorb the rest of the amount?
Yes.
Is it possible to push in like two warrant? One, like, assuming we get the approval and we go join the MSBA plan? And that's how much the town will have to estimate to pay? And another warrant for if the town chose not to, then how much we are talking about?
Yeah, it's a good question. We would not need a warrant immediately at the February town meeting to fund the project if we choose to go with MSBA. At some point, we will need town-wide votes, and maybe that would be April. Can't remember exactly how quickly, probably not. We would need, we need some financial commitment in April, but not for the full, because we wouldn't know what the full project is. Obviously, we have to go through the process, but we need some financial commitment for design.
Yes. That would be kind of like the eligibility for it. And when we go to ultimately select the OPM and the designer.
Because you essentially are just starting over again. And so it would just be funding for that initial part of the project. And then as you progress, then it would be in future. I would think it would probably be anywhere from maybe, probably two years. And that would be when we would have kind of that better cost estimate of the overall project cost.
So the town would be paying for what it paid already for again?
The town would have to fund that initial period through MSBA.
What do you mean the town would have to fund it through MSBA?
The town would have to commit to funding the cost of the owner's project manager and the designer. And that it's, we're starting a completely clean slate.
The only other thing I'll flag under this, because we don't have a vote on it, but I'm just saying, we talked about it a couple of times, it's just a good conversation around to get the project design change. And obviously, Sean came last week too, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, to present on that a bit more. But I don't know if there's other questions, or I know you had some questions and you reached out for some stuff we shared. But just other information that, leading up to the next meeting, would continue to be helpful as folks weigh the options and lead up to a vote.
Well, at this point, it's helpful to know that there are refined cost estimates, like, being created right now. So I think that's definitely going to look forward to seeing those. I mean, part of me feels like, I don't know that we need to necessarily keep looking with a microscope at this model that we have when we don't, if the numbers could be shifting a little bit. I mean, all the conversations we've had at this table, I think, have just been in the service of trying to make sure that the project we're recommending is meeting the needs of the district for the present and the future, you know, in as fiscally responsible a way as possible. So I, getting the next level cost refinements will be really good or insight before making like a final call, it almost seems to me. So. Do you expect those cost refinements to be lower than what we got?
I would hesitate to say one way or the other.
And then is what you were recommending, just as a way to bring, take some of the costs off that bottom line, is that something that we're also, we'll have information on with this refined cost or no?
So we should still have the same amount of data that we do now, just with the updated cost, for them to like break out, right, if, again, the project comes in. I'm just going to use 173 again, to not make any assumptions as to what it might be. But if it comes in 173 again, then they break it down to say, hey, this is the, out of that 173, this is the amount that looks like it would be towards the pre-K building versus towards the upper middle school building and have that cost separation down by the OPMs again.
So then we'll discuss it at a future meeting then, I guess, once we have that info, right?
I mean, I, given we are, I typically agree with you, given we are pretty close. I don't know if other timeline constraints on our decision exist. But, yeah, I mean, it does, if we are voting in two weeks and then we're going to get updated costs the following week.
Yeah, the next week. I think at this point, I think we should stay up to date on when we can expect the cost estimates. And, you know, what's, what the Select Board is talking about as far as timing for the town meeting is going to be a factor for us too. I mean, I think that's, that is the factor determining when we absolutely need to take, make a recommendation by, right? So I think, I don't think it makes sense for us to necessarily take a vote, yeah, a week before we can expect like the next round of further detailed information.
So I agree with that. I do encourage all of us, though, to look at the information that we had to grapple with, that, you know, I'm thinking of the presentations that we had to look at, the information, the analysis that led us to the realization that we needed to accommodate both pre-K and thinking about this lower and upper middle school configuration. That hasn't changed.
That's true.
And I think that's an important piece of information for those, you know, some of us haven't looked at that for a while, some of us live it because we're in the School Building Committee. So we're constantly looking at it. But to remind ourselves that that hasn't changed. And so I think that's important from sort of an education programming perspective, that I think the need hasn't shifted. So for us to hold on to that as we look at not only a solution, so for the immediate future, I think, and even going beyond that, as setting our town up for success and with enough space to accommodate the need. So we don't find ourselves in hoping to find another attic or hoping to find another space that we can build upon. And we know that that's a challenge already. So I think that hasn't shifted. So just to remind ourselves of that, definitely, no need to, you know, belabor the conversation right now. But I think it's a reminder to ourselves.
If I could add to that, I think something that was really to look at for me was, you know, there was the 2019 study that talked about the space needs, the study, sort of where we were over capacity. But then there's, you shared with me, there's some more, sort of a document of like, what's been taken over, which I think was really important. Because the 2019 was sort of, oh, here are some suggestions, you know, here's possibly where you could, you know, add something here, add something here. But then part of that also was, and you could take over this classroom for this and this. But then part of that also was, and you could take over this classroom for this, and this for this. And the most recent, that document really shows what's been done in the short term to address the needs and what has been taken over. Because I don't think, I think you can hear things, you can talk to the schools, you can walk around, but, but I think also seeing it in concrete detail, detail that was like, this used to be an art room, and now there, you know, this art room, this, this art, French and Spanish are now on carts. This, this, and this, and I think that really helped, you know, kind of bridge that, bridge that information gap. That helped me a lot, really looking, looking at what's been done, you know, how we've kind of tapped out. So, thank you for that information.
Sort of along that line is a segue back to you, Anna, for the facilities advisory committee.
All right, so Selena, speaking of addicts, here we are, Cunningham, third and fourth floors. For Cunningham and Collicott, we, I sent you, sorry, it was delayed on my part, but I sent you the cost estimates that we got from the, from Arrow Street, like right around six thirty, so I apologize for, I was just trying to get it on right before seven. But you could take a look at what they, what Shinali shared with, so I think the overall cost estimate is five point four six million. So that includes the scope and project costs and just enough buffer for anything additional that could, they could encounter. Third floor, if you separate it out, is one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven, roughly, one point eight. And then the fourth floor is two point two-ish with the escalation that's included. And so, and then there's the design fees as well. So, so that's kind of what we're looking at right now as our overall cost. And obviously, the cost increase from last year is just because of, the scope has changed. It's now two floors, because after discussions with the building leaders, that's what made most sense, is to renovate both of those, so that you move the library upstairs and then create the four classrooms and the offices downstairs. And then obviously, there's some, some repair work on the stairs and the elevator area that is, kind of also adds to the scope. And it's really, you know, for the fourth floor, it's really the mechanical, electric plumbing stuff that's really adding to the price tag up there. So it's just, it's a big space, but it's, it's older and hasn't been used in forever. So that's kind of where we are. And we do have a motion tonight to mark your better than me at math. So is that the?
We did the math, just remove the two million dollars from the.
Okay.
Two million dollars admitted, so it's just three point four six.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
So this would be for us to then go to, what's sort of the process that we're going to follow from this? Right, so we would go down the additional, three point four, three point five, I'm going to say, million and top of the two million that we already have secured. And this would go to the capital? No, you already discussed this with capital, and that's. So it's our recommendation.
And our hope would be that capital improvement planning committee could take this up fairly soon in order that this could be considered like ASAP, right? To move the project forward?
Yeah, yes, I mean, ideally, if this could be included in the February town meeting, then that means we'd have access to the funds in February versus July. If we wait until the May town meeting, it's not available until July first. We already have two million dollars of funds for the continuation of the design. It's more a matter of signing a contract. We can't sign a contract with a vendor unless we have the funds actually allocated to us. And so that is the issue, is we can kind of move the designs forward. But we'd just be sitting on our hands till July first, which means we'd miss the entire summer. We might still miss the summer, it will be a very tight timeline, given that the town meeting's not in December, it's in February. So that's possible, but it's still, would give us the best shot of trying to get some of the work done this coming summer, because it's likely going to be phased over two, two years, some over twenty twenty-five and some over twenty twenty-six, to avoid disruption during the school year.
So, so my questions are not with the complete understanding of space needs across the district, so I just want to caveat that. I guess what started last year as recognizing that there's space on the fourth floor and then getting two million dollars to explore, to saying that it was useful space, to now we're at five and a half million dollars. And it's a two-story, and it's second, third, it's the third and the fourth floor. I, I guess I'm just, from a process standpoint, if we're looking at spending five and a half million dollars and we have every school with space needs, I guess where is, what's the process, or what has been the process to determine, like, if we have five and a half million, is there something we could do that affects more than one school if we're sharing the budget? Or was it just, we're only looking at, you know, at this project? And then, you know, how, I guess, how does that decision go? Like if it's, if we're looking, you know, because that's where that, when I was asking about the other space needs and kind of what each school needs, did we look at that? So is there, like, I guess that's where, and how, and then how does that decision come about? I guess that's where I'll start.
I think when we toured the schools, like, I think in September of twenty twenty-three, we took the entire facilities subcommittee, and we kind of, and just to kind of back up, like, we decided when Mark and I joined the facilities committee to like actually have a charge of doing something, which would, you know, like, we have all these volunteers who are really, they love, you know, they, they want to be on this committee and they want to be able to contribute. And we thought it was a, it would be, you know, good for them to kind of like, hey, let's work on short-term space or more medium-term space solutions. So that was kind of where we started. And we toured all the buildings, which was really helpful. And obviously, there are things that we, we came up with for, I think there were a lot of things shared, like adding a mezzanine, for instance, at the Tucker Library, like a second floor. And there were several solutions that, you know, ideas that were thrown out. This was probably the most viable in terms of space was just empty and kind of sitting there, so we started there. So that was kind of, so that became the focal point, like, for, you know, this, that particular, like, our first year. And so we started exploring options in terms of what, what could we do up there? You know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big space, high ceilings, like, it's, you know, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of storage. I mean, a lot of, a lot of stuff up there, so it's like, what can we do? So just like you would do in your own home, it's like, okay, can we reconfigure the space that is kind of unused? Like finishing a basement or an attic, or just that kind of mindset. And then obviously, other things were suggested, like, hey, could we add on to the back of Glover? Like, could we, yes, absolutely, there are lots of options. But this was, seemed most like a low-hanging fruit in terms of, like, the space was already there. We're not building anything, we're just finishing the inside. So that's where we started. And obviously, like, when we got the estimates last year, I mean, we're not really that far off in terms of the construction project, but then there's the space design project and the, all the mechanicals and all that stuff that is needed, because the space has been unused for a long time. So that's where the, kind of the expense comes in. So that's still something that will, we know, we might need to look at down the road. Like, what will we have to, you know, do with the other schools, you know? Like, so there is the reality of, you know, like, we have, we might have to look at options down the road. So I, I think we had a lot of great ideas. So I think that's something that we can continue to explore if we need to go in that direction where we can. But we did look at all schools and try to see what we could do in each of those areas to, you know, think about, like, you know, help each of them. So, but yeah, so that's kind of where we started, it was just our first point, but feel free to add to it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there were other things, we looked, we looked at M H T V at Pierce, we looked at, at the high school, right, the consolidated facilities, and is there a way to get them out to give high school space? And, you know, not to kick Peter out of his face, but we talked about that. We talked about storage spaces in each of the buildings, walling up the spaces in the library at Pierce and Cunningham, Collicott, which we did this past summer. So like, there were a lot of things coming out of there, but there's, there's nowhere else in the district within any of our sites where we have an entire floor that is like untouched. And so the only way to do anything like that in any other site would be to do an addition, which is more costly and more, we thought, felt like more disruptive. And as you said, like, this was low-hanging fruit. The other thing that is unique to this site is, it's not helping just one school, it is helping two schools, right? Because of Cunningham and Collicott sharing the facility by building the space, you are helping both, you're helping fifty percent of our elementary schools. And so that, that was, I think, another, another part where if we are triaging and prioritizing projects. And then, yeah, the two million dollar estimate just was not good enough, clearly, for kind of like we, it needed, you know, it feels rough that we've lost this time because we didn't come up with as good an estimate as, as we probably should have. And so that, that doesn't feel great. But if we want to do this, this is what it is. And I'll say, like, the number was shocking to us and everybody on the committee in similar ways, that the school building number was shocking to us and all the people on the school building. Like, unfortunately, I haven't seen any of these facility numbers come in and be like, oh, yeah, that's reasonable. Yeah, let's do that. All of them are coming in quite high, unfortunately. And so, yeah, that's, I think, just sharing kind of the process. But again, I think it's going to be incumbent on, the facility advisory committee made a recommendation to us, and I think Anna and I both support that based upon our votes. But like, it is ultimately on this committee to say, like, yeah, how we are going to prioritize our asks within the context of all the needs across the district and all the other asks also that we want to make of the town, which is the school building project we just talked about, budget, which we just heard from some of the needs and have talked about in finance and all the other things.
Can I just add something to?
Yes.
From on high up here, it's, it's more than just creating more space, because the, I think our biggest pinch point throughout the district is probably that library and the, the number of things that are happening in the current Cunningham Collicott Library. When we brought MSBA there, it was the first place we went. And it was because it's, it's, in, in its current reality, it's not really a viable learning space. People are making do, but it's, investing in this is not necessarily about solving our entire basis. It's not making the impact that a new school would make, additions would make, those kinds of things. It's, it's addressing an issue that we have currently by freeing up the, the fourth floor, putting the library there, and then creating real, actual classrooms in, on the third floor. Not having kind of, you know, intervention happening alongside a movie happening with an office right next to it. So it's, it's, it's more of a kind of an immediate educational need. And it does help in terms of our space realities there. It doesn't solve in terms of classrooms. Our, our net classroom gain is, is probably going to be one classroom. We currently have two classrooms in that space right now, the walled one, and then the other one that was, I believe, a tech classroom previously. So this adding four, you know, we think one would be a, a teacher's room, and then three would be our staff room, and then three would be classrooms. But it then, it then creates a, a library up on the fourth floor that's an actual library for twelve hundred students and, and addresses all the other kind of, or some of the other kind of office needs that we have that were really struggling.
Thank you, Peter, for mentioning that, because I think it makes me think about the way in which, you know, folks I know who have had less time, less participation in these various, like, facilities advisory, or who may not have closely tracked all the changes that have happened each of the past several years. There's still a narrative out there that we haven't been doing short-term solutions, which is false. We have been doing a lot of short-term solutions within the four walls of our buildings. And I think it's completely true that Cunningham Library, we've talked about, I've heard the phrase cannibalizing of our spaces, especially our common spaces. And the Cunningham Library has just had so many changes eating away at its actual, you know, intended purpose. And so that has, I think, come at a real cost to all the students in both of those schools, not to mention the, our staff, you know, who are working in that situation. So I'm glad to, to see that, you know, in further refining the proposal for the project, that we are able to make that piece right, which we would have needed to do, regardless of what else is happening, you know, outside of Cunningham. That is not sustainable and has been really problematic for, you know, a few years. And so I'm, I was, yes, it's, it's definitely expensive to understand what the actual true cost of completing the project is turning out to be. But it is, I think, going to be really important and valuable to do it.
I do want to add, and Peter, I apologize if you actually mentioned this, I'm forgetting, but beyond just the classrooms, like, we are gaining significant amount of improved office spaces, which again, as you, we heard Dr. Redden talk about, like, they use the, reading about diversity and, you know, meet the artist closet that I would go to all the time, that is now an office. We found out in the walkthrough, and during the walkthrough, he had his eyes on another closet. I'm like, that's the next one, I'm about to turn that one. So, you know, that doesn't feel great that that's where our, our staff have to be, is like just eyeing the next, you know, janitorial or storage room to, to create a space for our, our folks who are working with kids. So, you know, that's also, I think, heavily needed within the site. And again, this is not just for Cunningham, but also Collicott and the pressures that, of like, this shared space.
And we've also seen, by the way, just to, like, it is, it ripples out to our other elementary schools as well. Because as we've heard discussed, you know, when, like, one school is full, those students, as they come into that neighborhood, get assigned to other schools. So anything we're able to do that really. So anything we're able to do that relieves even a little bit of pressure within one school could mean that a kid is actually able to attend their neighborhood school. If that's something they want to do, whereas right now, they may not actually be able to do that. Which is the way in which it does actually, like, provide a benefit to the whole ecosystem of our elementary grades.
Yeah, that's a great point because we, again, we're able to wall off that one classroom in Cunningham to provide a space back to Collicott that Cunningham was using, which ultimately gave Glover an art room this year.
Right, exactly.
So like those, all those pieces.
So is there a, like, if you guys looked, since you had, you know, you looked across all of the schools, is there thoughts on if there were other things to tackle, what you could tackle to make even small changes? Like, are there smaller things to do so that, like, if there was, you know, I think about the size of the pre-K classroom at Tucker, which is tiny and there's no bathroom. And they walk the kids down, like, are there things that we can do to address some of those? Are there, are there any other?
That will probably come, I mean, I'm sure facilities should weigh in on that, but we will be, um, producing an FY26 or FY28 capital request that's sort of on the cycle. And Tom will, uh, I, my understanding is Tom will work with you, Peter and Katie to generate, like, to identify what those next projects would be. And then he brings to us the recommendations for that capital request, which those go to the May town meeting. So we're, we're a little ways out from identifying what those projects would be. This is just the one trying to kind of go back and make whole the ability to move the project we already approved last year, is my understanding. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, I think, you know, the, what is the next thing we work on is, is always the question. I think as you, you know, saw within the 28, the reports you sent, like, we unfortunately are running out of the lower hanging fruit, right? And Cunningham being one of those where we are. And so we are, principals are already doing it, thinking very creatively, like, what, what can they do? What else is there? And I think facility advisory, as we pivot away from the fourth floor of being like our, uh, kind of sole focus of like, what is the next thing, I think we'll need to weigh in and see if there's other items. Tucker is uniquely challenging just because of how, for a small building that is, what a small site that is.
Right, and I'm not like,
Yeah.
It, it's just when you think about, like, every school having needs, it just, you know, all, it's like, all of this going in at, um, Cunningham, Collicott, and I get it and I get it's needed. And just like, you know, just I'm thinking, you know, a budget conversation this morning about even needs, you know, it's, it's, we, we're a town with no money, you know? And so like five and, you know, three and a half million dollars more on top of what we asked. It's needed. I just want to make sure that as I'm thinking about it, that we're taking into account all of the schools, that there's a thought of like, what's next? Knowing that, you know, the majority of the capital projects typically, not all of them are getting approved every year. So it, so I just, I, I just want to be mindful of saying we're putting five and a half million to one school and maybe we can do something for the others in three years.
Well, I think the thing that next is the school, like, the school, the business is the thing.
Right, right.
There's no way of getting around that. There's nothing we're going to be able to do at each of these sites that will do anything to level that we need with the exception for kind of the school. And so I think the sooner we can make that decision and move that project along in order to close that timeline, also then makes it more clear what is the facility advisory committee, what is the timeline we are working off of too? Because it's, the other piece is the investment in the fourth floor of Cunningham is a long-term asset within the building space. The other thing is, is, you know, has come up, four trailers, uh, which are not as long-term an asset and quite expensive. And again, how, how long or what is the timeline we're trying to build them for that we need for? Obviously, there's loss of the land, there's other negatives kind of with, with going outwards in terms of sites. But those are things we, we gotta talk about. But certainly, like, nothing's going to settle this, like, the building we need to move that forward.
Yeah, I think that's the way to think of, or at least the way I'm thinking about it. It's a, it's a capital improvement for two schools, right? It's going to benefit both schools. And it is sort of the identification of space not utilized. Unfortunately, that is not the case for the other schools, right? We just don't have that. And other than, you know, sort of adding to the footprint of them, which that is a consideration that was, that was thought about.
Right.
You know, as the project for the, you know, big school project was, we came, we came to that realization knowing that, for instance, um, with Tucker, where do we build, right? And then with Glover, without taking some of the green space and everything else, like, where do we go?
Right.
And so, and then also looking and weighing the modulars, knowing that that is not permanent and it's costly. We looked at, the last time we looked at it, eight million dollars. And for what? At least this capital improvement that's going to benefit for these two schools is permanent. It's there. So it's, it's, it's an asset to the town, really. It's benefiting these two schools in particular. But as it was mentioned earlier, there is a ripple effect and a benefit to the other schools. Not as much as we want it to be, but at least some will work on the bigger project.
Like I said, yeah, and, and I recognize that. I mean, I recognize there's no, there is, I know there's no other space. I just, I think it's, you just want to make sure that you're considering everything and that, that as I'm thinking about it is, you know, what's next year? What's, and because mentally they're, at some point, we're not there yet, like, do you have thoughts on? I mean, I don't even want to say plan B because it's not going to address all that classroom needs. So, um, so, okay, I just, I just need to.
And I think also, just like with the facilities, like, that, you know, the school building committee is focused on their charge and the facilities is kind of addressing, like, what can we do with existing space that's maybe not utilized the best way? Like, we talked about the cage in this building, you know, like, there's this big area.
Oh, yeah.
And how do we move, like, could we move that, you know, um, the, um, move them out of there and use that space for something in this building, right? To create more space here. So I think any of those kind of changes that we make are long-term benefits. So like, you know, I mean, we have members on the facilities advisory committee that have been on for over a decade, maybe even more. So I feel like there's something for us to do, like, on that committee that can make long-term improvements. And, and it would be separate from the school project, right? Like, that's its own thing, but we could continue to like, because obviously, as programming changes and our needs change, we're, we'll always benefit from having the additional space. So it's like, if it's in our building and we can reconfigure it better, it's always a good investment, I think, like, you know, so, um, but yeah, I think that's something that we can continue to explore in year five or year 10 on the facilities advisory committee.
Well, I think it's just even important for the town to know the thought process and the process that we, that we, that you went through to get there, recognizing, you know, that every, you know, that every bit of money, more money that we ask for, regardless of the department in town, it's, it's a big consideration. So knowing that it's, that it's been so fully vetted and explored, I think is important.
Yeah.
And I think, and, and to say, you know, and just to, so people are like, well, what about my school? You know, to know that those have all been explored. So I think it's, that was just.
I think, again, it was really helpful, I think, when we did the tour of the schools to have all of us go through that and kind of, you know, come back and take our notes and come back and have a discussion on what made most sense to tackle first, right? Like, there are all these possibilities and some cost more than others and some make more improvements than others, like, but I think, you know, when we looked at the fourth floor and it was like 4,000 square feet of space, you're like, whoa, like, that's a, it's a lot more than a closet, you know? Like, so it was, it was good. And there are windows up there, so that was like the other thing, like, that was so important to me because when I was seeing, you know, service providers in, in closets, it's just like, oh my goodness, like, this is not safe, you know? So just giving them that, like, if we have that space, like, why don't we give them a better work environment? If we can do that, even though we're only netting one new classroom, you know? It's just like, can we make their experience a little bit better? And, you know, it comes back to like, we were talking about retaining teachers, like, what is their experience there? So it's kind of, it works on that level too, so.
Can I ask one follow-up question? Because I know earlier, was there any, um, were there ever concerns? Or I thought I'd heard concerns from the, like, from a fire standpoint, like a fire department standpoint? But is that for fourth floor? Was that ever something that came up or?
It came up.
It came up, it's not an issue. And the elevator from a standpoint of accessibility is all, okay, so, great.
Which was really helpful, like, they did a whole, um, inspection of the space and it was nice to hear from the architect that it is a completely viable space, which was really reassuring too. So it wasn't like, we're kind of going down this road and then, you know, find out that we can't use it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, I would like to make a motion to make the request from the capital improvement, planning committee, an additional 3.46 million for the Cunningham Collicott fourth floor and library renovation project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And we are skipping approval of minutes, so that just means next meeting agenda items. I believe we're going to have the Tucker Site Council. And, you know, we have a number of follow-ups that we've been discussing through this meeting of various subcommittees. So, um, those will be, those will be included. And, uh, we are having our governance, um, retreat next week in the meantime, which will be a good opportunity to check in around our progress toward our goals and our practices and governance. So looking forward to that. Anyone have any other issues you want to raise at this point, looking ahead to the next meeting?
No, but I would like to let you all know that I will be, um, running late next Tuesday. I will be making my way back from Western Mass and hoping to get back here in time for our meeting. So I apologize in advance.
No problem. And we'll send around, like, the food options and whatnot. Peter, is there anything else you wanted to add?
I don't think so, other than I'm excited to be in person next time.
Thanks.
And hoping I make it to school tomorrow.
Yeah, hope you feel better.
Thank you.
And, uh, that's, that's it. So I'll just make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? All right? Thank you all so much.